We'll start with roll call.
Mr. Campbell Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Franchco.
Okay, anybody have anything that needs to go to the top, to the first pressing business? Okay, we'll start number one, the minutes, two, the bills, three, additional appropriations. We'll circle back to that when Martha gets here. Four, we'll circle back to. Five, adopted resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for the county year 2025. Completed prescribed forms approved by Chum County Budget Commission was submitted to the world file rate resolution. Six, authorize the purchase of a Dragon 4.0 X-ray unit. Everything basically that the owner said that he needed, in the amount of $36,680.
He'll be here tomorrow.
We paid this yesterday. Seven, grant permission to Hartford Township to close the road listed, Five Points Hartford Road. And that is going to be on Saturday, September 21st, at 5:30 and 7:00. And that's going to be for the Apple Festival Parade. So make a note of that, September 21st, 5:30 to 7:00. Number eight, approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Jonathan Kelson, the physician custodian, 1445 per hour with Maintenance Department, effective September 16th pursuant to the job posting, and he successfully completed his drug screening and background check. And let's go back to number three. Now, with the auditor.
He's moving fast today. Martha Yoder, Chum County Auditor, approved the additional appropriations from my office, $55,000, IT, $55,000. This is for the office 365 licenses for adult probation, family court, and miscellaneous. Move on to number four, two, approve the transfer of appropriations. And the first two are 911, increase in telephone costs, increase in training seminar costs, auditor IT, need for Cisco renewal costs, increase in office supplies, Board of Health, increases in licenses, permits, and refunds. Excuse me, Children's Services, increased mileage costs to transport children or repair costs, specifics broken transmission on the van, emergency management is needed for vehicle maintenance, increase in office supplies, Planning Commission is an increase in office supplies, Sheriff is an increase in office supplies, equipment maintenance and equipment, increase in equipment, increase in inmates closing, increase in postage, and for tag, increase in equipment. And done.
Anything on number five, who's cleaner?
Yeah, Christie.
Hi, Christie Cesarek, Auditor's Office. This is something that we have to pass every year, by higher vice code, it needs to pass by October 1st. It's basically, we call it a rate resolution, but the title is Resolution Accepting the Amount and Rates As Determined By the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levies and Certifying Them to the County Auditor. This was approved by the Budget Commission at their meeting two weeks ago. They approved the counties and they approved all of the other local governments that we sent out. The first page is just prescribed by a higher vice code. The second page lists an estimate of what our levies will collect based on the information that we have at this time. And then the third page is the list of all the levies that the county has in effect right now for next year. This is all for 2025, calendar year 2025. Do you have any questions?
No.
For me about it?
Okay, and we'll head over to number nine. Authorize me, President of the Board of Chum County Commissioners, to sign on behalf of Chum County Department of Job and Family Services the contracts for this dated August 28th. Contracts create 33 training opportunities and two job opportunities, and the total cost 208,916 under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Yes, John Gargano, Job and Family Services Commissioner, this is a normal course of business with the WIOA funds and allocations. We brought these two before, and they are training opportunities for individuals, 33 in this case, and two job opportunities for individuals through the Workforce Development Act, and it's for no general funds on that one. If you want, I could go on to...
Yep, number 10 is personnel action of employment, total four candidates for Chum County Department of Job and Family Services. Candidates will begin employment on September 16th, and they all receive their background check, drug screening, and favorable results. And they are Stephanie Tripolis, Amelia Cole, Thomas Hill, and Sebastian Finnegan.
That's correct. The first two, Commissioner, of John Gargano, Job and Family Services, those are casework positions, and the second two are for our maintenance. We've had some individuals that have left the Maintenance Department, have moved up. They've been on other positions, so we're filling those two positions also, and they all will be serving that probationary period of nine months. We will, probably in the next week or so, be coming up with more employment.
John, are you getting enough candidates to apply for the jobs that you have open, or is it lower than in the past?
It's been lower than it has been in the past, and, you know, I think with other employers, we're seeing the same thing, and maybe with 911, you can't get enough candidates sometimes, and we've gone to a different sort of practice before. We'd send the letters out, and those individuals would come in for their interview, but since the pandemic, it's all changed. We send them a letter, we follow it up with a phone call to whoever it is, you know, you have your interview on such and such a date, and you plan on attending or whatever, they say yes, it comes to that time, they don't show up. Or then they show up, and then they just don't want the job.
Or a lot of times, John, they don't pass the drug test.
And there's times that they don't pass the drug test. Once they find out they have the drug test and the background check, they sort of back out of it also. We don't know that, but we have an idea that that's what they do.
Okay. Let's select those four individuals. Number 11, approve an agreement binding between Board of Chum County Commissioners and Chum County Planning Commission and the Lake to River Economic Development Agency, and authorize Julie Green to execute the agreement for Economic Development Services for period commencing September 8th, continuing for period of 12 months. Chum County share for the contract to be $45,000, paid in four equal installments. Nick Hoggins?
Nick Hoggins, Chum County Planning Commission. So this is an annual agreement that we do for business retention expansion and attraction services. Right now, the Lake to River that's newly formed this year is the designated local economic development organization for Chum County. Previously, it had been Regional Chamber. The Lake to River would establish the Chamber stuff, providing economic development services. So this is an economic development contract, B-R-E-N-A services. We entered into annually, it used to be with the Chamber as the designated local economic development organization. It is now the Lake to River newly formed, and that's identified, that change is identified in the preamble of your agreement. This has gone to the prosecutor's office, they have looked at it and have approved what changes that they requested. The agreement that you received has all the changes that the prosecutor requested in it.
Nick, real quick, will they still be doing site visits to businesses?
Yeah, that's what this contract is for. This is their, part of that business retention expansion, some of the deliverables is regular reporting, they have to do an annual report to the commissioners where they show, you know, explain what was accomplished. They have a certain, they have a minimum number of one-on-one visits they have to do with existing companies, so see what those companies need, what that industry needs to make sure that we're retaining those businesses.
And they'll still be marketing in the Wall Street Journal as we did with the Chamber and all those different things?
Yeah, they'll still be marketing. I don't know if it's, we didn't identify specifically the Wall Street Journal, but there's...
In the past, they did.
Yeah, they'll probably be through State Selection Magazines, they're in charge of updating available properties on the Jobs Ohio site for us. So they're our primary site for that.
Just a little bit of changes, really.
It's just the name, and technically the organization, but they're, the Jobs Ohio designated, just the name has changed a few then, everything else is the same.
And the next one, authorize advertising on public notice and a news favor general circulation, publishing a tribune current of September 9th, announcing the timeframe and location of the request for price proposal packages for PY-23 Community Development Block Grant, Community Development Fund Program, Project One, Activity Two, Revolving Loan Fund, Holland Scope Center Improvement Project.
Nick Hoggins, Chum County Planning Commission, this is part of one of our CDBG Community Development Block Grant allocation projects that was previously approved. When we got our allocation, we did the public hearings, the advertising, this is one of the projects that was selected. We are now at the point where we're advertising for price proposals to move forward with that project, and we're using our local revolving loan fund as local match required to complete the project.
Thirteen, enter in a non-reimbursable extension agreement for the extension of sanitary sewer in accordance to ORC. Chris Villoick, owner on Deepak Drive, Holland Township, Chum County Combined Sewer District, subject to the approval of the prosecutor's office and approved detailed drawings and Mosquito Creek Sub-District. This is a private individual wants to extend.
Yes, yes, Commissioner. This is Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer. This is just for one house. He's, the sewer is near him, he's just extending it over to his property.
Looks smarter with that haircut, Gary.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
Brings him back to his old Air Force day, huh? Okay, number 14, approve change order number two with Gorilla Contractors for the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, number five, S-18, amount of $18,0810, revising the total contract value to $2.5 million. Change, the change order consists of lowering the flow line elevation between manholes 11 and 13 within the village of Yankee Lake along Brockway Avenue, and increasing the depth of manhole 12. This eliminates the need for the county to provide three grinder pumps and approximate cost $10,000 grinder station for three household connections, and provide households with gravity service, stack boxes, and the amount of $18,0810. This is more or less.
Commissioner, yes, it's going to cost the project another $18,000. What I'm trying to say here is that, oh, I sent you this drawing too, I think you guys...
Thank you.
I thought I attached this. But we're getting out ahead of the contractor, and one of the things that you do when you're building this, go out and make a final determination on how deep these laterals need to be. Chuck Miller was out in front of the project, he realized these sewer are going to have to get on grinder pumps, and when he looked at this drawing, for some reason, prime A E didn't drop this sewer deep enough. So instead of this sewer being this deep, we need to do this to eliminate the need for three grinder pumps here, which would, they first thing say those grinder pumps are about $10,000 apiece. So for $18,000...
Instead of $30,000, we're doing $18,000.
Yeah. Imagine if we would have to buy those grinder pumps for them. So that's...
Good catch.
Yes, I'm glad he got out ahead of that and found it, because, I don't know, if I was connected to a sewer, I wouldn't want the grinder pump either, I just want the gravity. But anyway, we're still in good shape on this project, we still have about $200,000 cushion after this.
Number 15, accept maintenance bond number 7901151734 issued by Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company, committed by DSL Excavating for sanitary sewer extension on the Lee Road Sanitary Sewer Project, Brookfield, Ohio. The bond is for two-year period.
Yeah, Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, this is self-explanatory, Commissioner, this is a private extension and just submitting their maintenance bond.
Okay, next one. Adopted resolution authorized in Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Chum County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the county of Chum for planning, design, and/or construction of the Pendleton-Gilmore Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, number six, S-22.
Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, Commissioners, the nominations for program year 25 are due September 18th at the EPA for the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. This one and items 17, 18, 19, all very similar. I just need approval here in order for you to be able to sign that nomination once I send it in. The most important one is that first one, that Pendleton-Gilmore. We're shooting for that $4 million of principal forgiveness on this. I have the majority of it written at my desk right now, putting the finishing touches on it, but I may be able to get it signed probably next week and make sure we get it in by the 18th.
Adopted resolution authorized in me, President of the Board, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the county of Chum for planning, design, and/or construction of Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement.
Yeah, Commissioner, like I said, this one and 18 and 19, they're all due on the 18th.
Okay, number 18, the same thing, but that's for Smith Stewart Road Sanitary Sewer. Gary, do you expect we'll get these for all four of these?
Oh, yes, well, they'll all get listed, at least for the 0% loan, but you're only allowed one principal forgiveness project a year, and that's going to be that first one. These other three are for the 0% money.
And then 19 is for construction of the State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, one S-19.
Yes, and I will remind you that the Commissioners did put on State Line and Smith Stewart, there is ARP funds in there too, a couple with the 0% money to get the assessments done.
Gotcha. Twenty, authorize Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed to Pollard Land Services, Inc., for the Skewville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Notice County Project Number Five, S-16, in Vianna Township within Chum County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Skewer Creek subdivision.
Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, Commissioner, if you look at that note, we already opened the bids, and Pollard was determined to be lowest and best. He awarded the contract on July 17th. Now that we have all the contract documents executed, it's time to issue the notice.
Twenty-one is special hauling permit for Gerald Transportation. Twenty-two is right-of-way permit for Enbridge Gas, two permits, custom cable construction, utilicom. And twenty-three, point Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Chum County Commissioners, to serve as chairperson of the 911 Program Review Committee for ORC 12806. That's our regular agenda. Casey, you want to talk a little bit about this? I know we just, it was just presented to us, we got our feasibility study back from about 911?
Yep.
And what are the high notes, low notes?
Casey McDonough, 911 Director, received the feasibility study back from last week. I gave both of you guys copies, I put one in Commissioner Franchco's mailbox in there. Long and short of it is, the two buildings, there were three buildings that they looked at, Pine Street was definitely a no-go for various reasons. The Gibson Building in Warren is a possibility, however, the cost to renovate that building will be a lot more than the Portland Bank location. Due to it being precast, there's a lot more they would have to do. Additionally, a lot of the money that would be used to make that building viable would be doing upgrades to other tenants in that building, so not exactly just something that the county owns. Size-wise, it's not quite big enough either, due to some of the perks of the Portland building having shared space with that basement cafeteria area. So that is the most viable option going forward. They also gave a suggested option of if we did new build, but that was obviously a lot more, plus you don't have, you know, land costs, site costs, all that preparation. That work that could be done to make it category four, risk appropriate would be about five to six months, once everything was moving forward. Of course, we'd have to go out to bid for several of the projects, several portions. There's a couple of different ways of looking at it, I'm going to talk with Danzo to see what the best way. I spoke to a couple of other agencies that have done projects like this, and some of them have done full source and basically hired the architect, and then went out to bid for each individual aspect of the project, so say plumbing, electric, various pieces like that, and they were able to save money by doing it that way. Some talking with them to kind of see how they did that, need to talk to Danzo, see what's possible. I'm meeting with Frank Migliosi of the Health Department today, just to kind of see what next steps are for us, if we were to move forward, and I need to get a call-in to Martha and Christie to see what preliminary budget numbers we would have to move forward. All in all, it looks like it's going to be about, close to a million, million and a half for renovations, that doesn't include furnishings, any of the fixtures, any of that stuff, so we can get, try to get better numbers for you guys as far as like poll call. I'm going to the Apodina Conference next week, which will be a lot of vendors there, so we can kind of get ideas on ballpark pricing on things, but obviously we'll have to go out to bid for almost every aspect of it. So that's kind of just the in-the-leads, sign-and-dash, quick version of where we're at.
I'd like to look it over, we're just getting it for the first time.
Right, right, and we're still kind of tearing it apart too, because there's a lot to digest there.
But it sounds like Portland is the recommended one by this thing.
Yes.
And I'd kind of like to at least give Lieutenant permission to start talking with Portland, start talking with the Health Department and seeing the preliminaries for that building, if we're working towards that building. I don't think it's a waste of our time to do that at this point, you know, I mean, we'll read the ins and outs of whatever, but I think that's the direction we're heading. I don't want to hold back on any time I made public comments before. I'd like to see this happen as quick as humanly possible to get it done, and so if you have to convene the 911 Review Board, go forward with talking, the initial negotiations with the Health Department and all the preliminary things, then when you go to your conference next week, at least you have a plan of potential place and how it's going to fit in and start getting prices, I think that'd be responsible thing at this point. If not, you're going to wait another whole year for that.
Um, well, are you going to be around for a little bit today?
I have a meeting at two at the Health Department.
Okay, can you and I go up or go downstairs when we get done, and we can talk? Christie and I had some thoughts, we've been talking a little bit, but we just have some ideas.
Sure.
One of my, I'll wait though, since she's going to be here, one of my ARPA things involves Casey as well, so we'll wait.
That was Martha Yoder, County Auditor.
Sorry.
Casey McDonough. That's good, that's good stuff. So we are going to need, Commissioner, we had a meeting at 911 last week, Martha had a meeting about the electric contained in the hillside and that type of stuff, and it kind of morphed into a meeting about the future of 911 timeframe, things like that. And we got to equip the building while having the other building at the same time, so at this point, we have to make sure we're covered electricity-wise, sewer-wise, water-wise. You know, as we talked before, for Gary to kind of get started on tapping in the sewer there, because we know this is probably going to be a process, it's going to be at least eight months, potentially a year, once we really dig into it and start the move or start the build out or whatever. So we do need to make sure the employees are covered there. Now, it seems like the latest negotiations are happening, there's some hope for hillside still, it's a thingy, and I'm sure whoever the new tenant would be, we can work with them to not shut us off, but still, you know, I know you're doing some research, Martha, on pricing to tie us in a loan, you know, stand loan and stuff, so...
Martha Yoder, Chum County Auditor, I'm trying to work on a meeting with Troy Rhodes, who is the contact that we have at First Energy. I'm still kind of working out the details, it may be when I'm unfortunately out of the office, and it may have to be them because of Casey's schedule, with Tim, Deputy Hannaford. The engineering person, though, that we will deal with in this, is someone that Deputy Hannaford's already been dealing with on the Brookfield property. So at least we have some of that, but we'll, I'm working on tying all that together, and you and I can talk a little bit more when we come. So, you know, we want to, my goal on this is to look at what are all our options are, and hopefully go with the most cost-effective thing to get us through. And yes, as you said, things are looking up, but we have to plan for every contingency at this point, so that's what we're doing.
Another thing that we discussed loosely was, although our IT department is extremely qualified, and Casey's qualified, her job, it's been so long since we've made a move, it's been, I think, going on 27 years, 28 years since we moved in that facility. Technology's changed a lot, we're going to need a lot of new equipment, and to move and make sure we cover all the bases, electronic-wise, technology-wise, I think it would be wise to entertain the possibility of a consultant that deals specifically in 911. Instead of Tim and Casey and us and Martha trying to put together a plan of moving, there are people out there that understand 911, day in and day out, that's what they do for a living, and I know it'll be a little added cost onto this project, but I think in the long run, I think that's the straightest way to go from A to B without having to go back and pick up pieces we may have overlooked or adding things later, plus the warranty part of that, and have someone that can guarantee that they got us everything that we need, and I think that is a responsible route to go with this thing too, after we sign on the facility and we go with the architect. I think just as far as the logistics of it, you know, that we need to look at consultants that deal specifically with 911-related equipment. So, and I know Casey's got some thoughts on that, some people she may know in the industry already, and I'm sure with this conference you're going to this week, I would ask you to keep your eyes open for that person, maybe another department in the state that's just recently made the transition, and with that too, quicker we get our costs together, quicker we can also reach out to the governor's office and look for some state assistance with his next-gen plan and everything that he unveiled at our center this past year, that we, we look to that, and maybe there'll be some funding, hopefully that we can, that'll help us in the transition from the state, that we won't have to bear the whole burden ourselves. Or at least we start looking for the grants that fit in with that stuff to make it feasible. And I think a consultant will help with that too.
Yeah, I think, Casey McDonough and 911 Director, I think that's 100% the way to go, I mean, you wouldn't want me designing a subject system for, you know, the engineering department, you know, and I wouldn't even, even in 27 years of being in 911, I'm not going to say that I know how to do all the intricate setup that would need to be, you know, set up for future proofing and redundancy and all those things to get ready for next gen. I think, you know, it might be an extra $100,000 on the end of the price, which obviously nobody wants to spend extra money, but at the end of the day, you want to do it right and make sure you're, for the future, so this isn't something you're having to redo again in 10 years. There should be something that's going to be a hard, fast building that's going to be there for the next 30, 40 years, and be set up for the future to where when you do make your yearly changes or your every couple of years with new technology, new equipment, that it's set up and ready to go where you just plug and play.
I agree. Lot to digest, I'd like to look at it.
There's a lot there, there's a lot there with the staffing study and all those things too, so the end, as far as the... The end, as far as the buildings go, it's probably your last 20 pages is going to be that section.
Okay. As far as hospital talks, we had a whole weekend full of stuff. When everybody was enjoying their Labor Day weekend, we were still having meetings all weekend. Had a meeting yesterday, early afternoon at 7:17, and we had a meeting yesterday evening with everybody involved in the process, basically that lasted about two and a half hours at the hospital and on Zoom or on the meetings, whatever thing it is, meetings. And the latest of it is, is it looks like Stewart Group is going to give all their assets to the landlord, sign them over, but they have a court hearing on September 10th. When that happens, instead of us negotiating with, and I say yes, I mean our community negotiating with Stewart Health Group, they'll be negotiating probably with MPT, the parent company. So right now, it's just a whole bunch of limbo. If they're going to take a hospital over, they made comments they don't want to run a hospital, so they're going to have to unload it somehow. So they're preparing to have a bid ready for that company when it happens. But then there was another change yesterday, even after we had all our meetings, that they have extended things out to December 2nd for them to find a transition to move their properties. And that was issued to Stewart, but Stewart may not own the properties after September 10th, so there's a lot of gray area. But the bottom line is, there is a group ready to put a bid in locally. Our money and the city's money are crucially important in that happening, but it's not going to be enough. So at this point now, the next phase of this is, over the next period of time, whatever we have, is reaching out to foundations and other sources, including other municipalities. And one thing that was brought up yesterday, City of Warren's in, the county's in, but City of Niles, Lordstown, Gerard, Cortland, they all utilize the hospital, also this hospital for everybody. So we're going to have to reach out, or the group is going to have to reach out to these other communities. And if this really is a save our hospital, community effort, it can't just be Warren or Niles, I'm sorry, Warren and the county doing it. We're going to need help and we're going to need some financial assistance from these other entities. They're probably going to need to raise about 15 million bucks as a new figure from the community outside of what they've already committed to even make this thing possibly happen. But if it does happen, there is a sure fit plan for success that's out there now finally.
Yeah, Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor. I did receive that pro forma from Cindy Russo this morning. The only thing that I was concerned about is it sounded like it might be a draft and not the final version. And so I did reach back out to her to make sure that I could share that with Attorney Rogers, because Attorney Rogers does need that before she can make any determination on eligibility. So that's all I'm waiting for, and I will, once I know I can share it, I will also share it with Attorney Danzo so that, because he's kind of dealing with the open attorneys, because they probably will need it.
And there are some things even in there that are contested. You know, that was.
Well, and that's part of what she said. I haven't gotten to look at the pro forma. It was just the content of the email itself made me question as to whether it was shareable at this point. So, once I know whether they want me to share it or not, I will. I just asked for permission before I did it.
But the big thing is the hopes of keeping the hospital are still alive. But people that are listening, watching this meeting, it's going to take more than just the counting the city to make this thing happen. We've done everything we could. We put our money where our mouth is. We have to get some assistance from Niles. We have to get some assistance from Cortland. We have to get some assistance from Lordstown. These other communities can't just ride in our coattail if this thing's going to happen. They have to be standing in the trenches with us, not to the tune of what we gave potentially. But every little bit counts, every $100,000 pledge, every $500,000 pledge is going to build up to make this thing work for it to be able to be feasible. There is huge potential for aligning with a national, nationally recognized, known name brand to go on the hospital if we hit the goal, and the consulting group they have has a plan to get to that point. But none of that happens unless the money comes up. And if the money doesn't appear, if the community doesn't care, if the other cities like Niles don't want to pony any money up, you know, that's, we've done everything we could as the county and proud of our efforts, all three of us. Proud of the efforts of the city. And like people said yesterday, we all learned a lot about our community, and when the going gets tough, who steps forward? Now it's time for us to reach out and ask the rest of the community to have our backs on this. Because we can't, can't put any more county money in liability or jeopardy or risk, and the city can't do any more at risk. We need to build an escrow fund for 717, give the money that's needed and have it be backed up that if for some reason, and Eddie Culver said it the best, when you sign on a car for your kid, you don't expect to make the payment? You expect you're just a cosigner and they're going to make the payment. But if they default, you're on the hook for it. And the county, we can't put the county on the hook. We can't put the city on the hook. But if the whole community shares in that risk, then this is possible, if we all share a little bit. And like you said, it doesn't have to be a huge amount, but Allen Township, Champion, Brookfield, even, everybody's got to be in on this thing if they want this hospital to succeed. If not, your residents are going to jeopardize if they have a traumatic accident or gunshot wound or something like that, that's going to add an extra 20 minutes or more to try to save your resident's life. And you know, so what's it worth to each municipality and each government entity?
Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor. People know that I like to pray. And I do, I put a lot of prayer in on this. But there's an expression that I've heard, and some people in this room might have heard it as well, that you sometimes have to put feet to your prayers, and that means you have to act as well. You can't just pray. And so I would encourage folks who want to help or do more than just pray, put feet to your prayers.
I think when people see the plan, they understand it. And Commissioner, I know you're well aware of everything. You've been up on all the proceedings this week.
I just wanted to say that yesterday was a bit of a win. If we could take anything from it, at least we got a little reprieve as far as time. The messaging has to be, as Commissioner said, more succinct and in these, the plan, as it is detailed with the pro forma, when we go to these foundations and we go to these communities, has to be more than what they're initially showing us. Because no foundation or no community is going to, is going to give to something that's not, that's not a good investment. And, you know, that's on the Delta Group and a lot of the members of the group to come and to explain in great detail how this is going to work and how Trumbull will outperform in the coming years as opposed to the prior years. And that's what it's going to have to do, because it's assuming a lot of debt, a lot of bad debt as well. So this is the beginning of the fight, but make no mistake about it, it's a fight. So we're in it till the end. Thank you.
We, like you said, we're doing everything we can on the county's level. We need the other communities to pony up. We went to the vigil the other day. We were all there, and we saw the community, we looked them in the eye, and we saw the people asking for help. We see that the employees really care, the customers care. We've heard from just about everybody who's anybody about this situation. Everybody supports what's the effort. But it's going to take more than talk right now, because they're teeing it up. We can't hit the ball. We got it all teed up for the community to come forth. We need the money. And that's, that's going to be the big key thing over the next week, weeks, months, whatever it is, coming up with that money to make this thing happen. And when it happens, I think we're going to have a rock star of a hospital when it happens, with all the good people that are behind us. We need to talk about partnering, because we've been asked a bunch of times about. Oh, you got something to share?
I do. Sheriff Taylor, town inspector. I don't know. A few weeks ago, we approved a security update for family court over on Main. It's been completed, but they did, I get, I got a call from magistrate bomb back. They would like to have two extra doors done, two extra doors secured in the total amount of $10,337.90. So I guess I am asking for them if we could approve that upgrade.
I mean, I know nothing about the upgrade, but I'm assuming because it's their court and they know that they need the security, they wouldn't just be, but why don't, why don't we make a phone call first?
Okay.
To the family court and just go over it with them before we.
Absolutely.
Say that we're going to appropriate dollars.
Absolutely. So if you would call magistrate bomb back, I'd appreciate it, and that's all I have.
Commissioner, you want to handle that?
Yeah.
Very good.
Fine. Thank you.
I had a meeting also. Alex and I had a meeting with the sheriff and some of his top brass last week, after our workshop, I believe it was. And we talked about the parking and what we can do to free up spots. Because this parking thing, we talked about the parking lot, it's just a piece of the puzzle. One of the things I brought up with is how do we eliminate the sheriff's deputies parking on Harmon? And that could open up three, four, five spots potentially at any given time as the deputies come in, do their paperwork, they come in and out of the side building or side door. The sheriff agreed to work with his deputies, and I see he must have come up with some type of deal with the people across the street on Harmon, because I saw the deputies have been parking there now behind the YMCA. So that was something the sheriff must have done on his own, maybe just a gentleman's agreement or phone call with them. But as Alex mentioned, last week she came out one day, there were no deputies on Harmon. There were like five open spots in the middle of the day when the customers can access the building. So that's a start of opening spots up. The other thing we discussed is across the street at any given time, we've got the judges and up to three deputies that are parking in front of the courthouse. It's pretty much take up all the spots from Money Avenue across the front of the courthouse. And we talked about the possibility of the deputies that are in there will never use their cruiser for anything other than to get to work and go home from work. But they are taking up spots up front for a vehicle that they're never going to touch during the day. We talked about can we move those? And there are some things by law, I found out, like in front of a courthouse, you can only have like a police car and no other vehicles for safety risk wise. So maybe one of the spots out there may have to be visibility of having a deputy parked up front. But the other ones, and potentially the judges, I had asked, is there a way even that we can create a little parking lot across the street on the square just for the judges? And you have four or five spots to the side, one of the sides of the building where it's inside a fenced scenario maybe or something where it's secured just for the judges' vehicles, and they come in a side door. Maybe increase the security instead of a judge parking on the street and then walking in and actually be closer for him. I have to meet with Mr. Murkowski from the city to talk about that with Bill Hart. We're in the process of scheduling a meeting for that, just to discuss overall parking between Warren and the county and how we can free spots up for the public to make it more publicly accessible. We do also have to make a decision. Mr. Veluski is patiently waiting. But of course, his patience is wearing thin more and more every week. To make a decision about the lot behind us and his bid that he put in to address, one, is that parking lot, how important is that parking lot to us? Two, the price. Three, the liability, which we talked, been back and forth on liability issue, which was kind of first. And I think we're probably 90% figured out on the liability thing. There's some things that he needed to do as well as us as far as the liability. But we got to, we got to, we got to make a decision. We owe it to him also for weeks and weeks, so he can figure out the future of what he wants to do there. Any thoughts, Commissioner?
I like the fact that we're exhausting this option first before we buy anything. Let's see where this takes us and go from there.
I liked the lot. I think the lot's accessible. I think the plan to even to have 30 some spots or whatever it is, 28 spots or whatever it's going to be, I would like the price to be a little bit lower. Right now, we're looking at $50 a spot, and I think it'd be more reasonable than the $30 to $35 per spot per month thing, which may or may not be acceptable to him. But I'm, I'm for moving forward or negotiating to move forward with it and not just, not giving a no at this point.
I agree. I agree.
Are there any, any things about that as we negotiate forward with that, that you'd like to see added or based on what he has?
Not at the moment, no.
I mean, we'll have the 28 spots. It'll be up to us to figure out how we utilize them, how we, what the schematics of them are. I'd like to see the price just a little lower, see if there's any buzz room with wiggle room with him on that. I know what the comps are around here, but the distance is a big factor. You know, we're trying to make it more convenient. We could utilize parking in the parking garage. We can park them down the road somewhere, I'm sure, for a lot cheaper. But there's that convenience factor, especially for elderly population and weather related things. You know, I just don't want to go another winter and see, you know, an old man.
Well, how many, how many spots did we free up?
At least six. So there's at any time, five to six. There was supposed to only be one dedicated, Alex even Jenzy Bush, she and resources firming. There's supposed to be one dedicated sheriff on the actual Harmon Street. To Commissioner Roy's point, there is, for ORC, we are required to have a sheriff's presence across the street at the county or at the courthouse for safety purposes. So one will always have to sit out there no matter what, and one will always be entitled to sit on Harmon Street. The rest of them.
But that still frees up six?
Yeah. Yeah, the rest of them were just civil, I don't want to say just civil, but they were, you know, civil officers coming in and out to do reports and whatnot, and thank, again, thank you to the sheriff's office immensely.
Absolutely.
For working with us on that, because that immediately, at least in the immediate time, freed up five to six spots. At any given time, I've actually walked it twice now, just because I come and go to offices throughout the day, other departments that I go to. One time I counted six spots, I believe that was Thursday, when I went to 911, and don't quote me, I don't remember what day. I go to so many places. I'm sorry. Whatever day I was at 911 was like Thursday. And then yesterday afternoon, I constantly am looking at my window, which just so happens to be right there, and there were five available. Just like without people parking in it.
Right.
Another thing that I do want to task our departments to do, and I apologize both on here, I try not to blindside people, but I'm seeing our county maintenance vehicles parking in those spots. You got to move. That's not what those are there for, okay? We're making a conscious effort to, you know, that little red HHR vehicle has always parked there. I've seen department heads park there. Again, unless you're coming to a meeting.
And that's what I'm worried about with the parking. I mean, if you're going to have all these spots.
I feel like we're working against ourselves sometimes.
And the maintenance department and other departments are going to park there.
Right.
Or employees. The thing is to make it more accessible to the public.
Correct.
Especially our elderly.
Right.
So without a definitive plan as to how we accomplish that, you're going to have more of that.
Yeah, so I had to kind of first assess to your point, you know, when the sheriff moved to, we saw kind of moving into those spots. And I will not lie, I did see some county employees, some county department heads, you know, I've seen it all. My office is right there, so I kind of look. So that's the next step, you know, now that we freed up those spots. I'm asking, and I could put out an email if you guys would, you know, approve that. I have no problem putting out an email that those spots are for the public. They should be for the public.
Of course.
And I think maintenance behind your spot, Commissioner, or your reserve spot, there's plenty of room to park two vehicles, maintenance wise.
There's even that.
They could park along the chain.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
And they do, yeah.
But if that's the spot that we designate for maintenance, when they're just popping in and out, that the public would never park there. They'd never want to block in, but you're not.
Right.
As long as they leave your room to back out.
Right.
You know, you got a little vehicle, you can get out, you can get out of there if it's a maintenance vehicle behind you. And kind of push maintenance towards that. The other thing, the other idea that was talked about, and this was something I talked to Bill about, the first spot on Harmon, when you turn, is handicap. And that's something we could work with Rapp in the city to make that like a 20 minute parking in and out. And what I'm talking about is someone that has lunch delivered here in the county, someone that has that's delivering mail from another department, a department head just dropping something off and running in for a signature, you know, things like that, that if we have one spot that you turn and burn all day long, that's just a quick drop off spot, maybe that first one, like you said, on Harmon. Instead of being handicap, have that one be for that type of business, if you just got to run in and grab something type of thing, or run in, drop something off at a county department. That would help a little bit too, because there aren't people that resist coming here or, you know, it's a burden for them to take them away from other things when they have to park way in the back and walk a long way. Or, you know, it's, it's a burden for them to take them away from other things when they have to park way in the back and walk a long ways. Um.
I don't disagree. I think if we, um, again, I, I don't wanna ask for a commitment that I kinda do. If you guys would allow me, I would like to put out an email that says that for now, I don't, we don't wanna see county cars parked there. I mean, in any way, shape or form, go park somewhere else. I mean, I feel like we need to reserve that for our public.
Yeah, I would, and I would put that, if you send it, send it to the department heads and tell them to advise also their county employees, so.
I mean, I mean, but yeah.
Basically, our employees.
I mean, I'll be very clear by what I mean. Um, and then to go back to, uh, what Commissioner Cantal Mesa, he also makes a valid point, um, about, so when you're talking about this potential piece of, of this, you know, twenty-eight spot, um, parcel, remember it's two parcels, um, we're talking about the back parcel, the one, you know, closest to her man. Um, things that we need to discuss, you guys need to discuss with the board is who is leasing that? I mean, who's leasing it? Who's monitoring it? Who's, you know, are you going to invest the money to get the gate back to work? You know, I mean, is there gonna be key fobs that are needed to pop into that gate? Are you gonna remove the gate and make it just in and out? I mean, there's a lot of things that.
Well, that's gonna be for public. We would remove the gate for one. There would be no key fob. Employees wouldn't be allowed to work there. We should have something in policy there that if they violate it, they can be disciplined for parking in that spot. That's for the public. That we don't want employees to figure, oh, no one will know that I'm here, I'm running late, I'll just park here, no big deal.
I mean, we do.
You can't have that.
Yes. We do have cameras and.
Right, but I don't know if we have a policy that you'd be in trouble for parking in this spot, not, you know.
Well, no, because we don't.
Right, but that should be something to be considered. We, if we're gonna make this for the public, then we can designate, veteran spot, uh, senior citizen spot, pregnant woman's spot, whatever. You know, however we wanna designate in there to make it for the public and as convenient as we can for those that shouldn't be able to or shouldn't wanna walk a long ways.
And then, um, where we left it, just so you know, is, um, if the board would like to proceed, uh, that Mr. Danzo would need two, you know, commissioners, uh, to tell him. And he would be offered to do the sample lease for you guys, um, you know, to kind of get that rounded out. And again, that's a sample lease. He'll send it over to Mr. Valeski with our terms of what we wanna see.
Right.
And that would then be up to Mr. Valeski and you guys at that point, A, is he even gonna entertain us, or, you know, what we're suggesting? Um, and then B, if the commissioners want to. So you have to get a little prescriptive and, and we can work with Mr. Danzo and get that all put together. Um, and then see what Mr. Valeski says after that. That would be the next step. But Mr. Danzo was very clear, he needs, you know, if that's how you wanna proceed, he needs majority of the board to instruct him to proceed in that manner.
Well, I, I, I think we both agree that, that, that number needs negotiated. Um, that, I think that was just the initial number that Mr. Valeski threw out. So, um, we need to come up with, uh, you know, a, a more solid offer to him and, and then see if he's amenable to that, you know?
I think you guys, you know, lay your terms out and, and what you guys wanna see. You know, you, you suggest that lease, and then if, if he takes it, great. If not, then you know we're seeing, so.
And auditor, auditor, any input on price-wise, fund-wise, budget-wise? How that fits in, where's a good clean number for us, or?
Uh, you don't want my input. Tremble County Auditor Martha Yoder, I don't think we should do it. It's a waste of money.
Hmm.
I will be glad to talk to Christie and see what we can find, but you, you asked for my input, I gave it.
I understand. I just think we.
I think, I think we should've bought it in the first place.
You should've.
I, I think we can all agree on that. I think that is.
I think leasing is a bad idea.
And you were the one that told us, hey, we should need to look into this, and we didn't listen. And we could've won it, and we could buy it now if we wanna pay five times what he paid for.
We're not paying that. So I'd have to tell you no on that. Sorry. Not that it's mine, but no.
But we could've, we didn't. You know, twelve thousand a year or so. He wants fifteen-ish a year, twelve thousand a year. It seems a little more reasonable for people to be able to get in and out of the building. Um,
Well, I think we've made some headway. We got five spots. Um, and that gives us some time to sort of turn over a fair number.
Tell the people in YMCA do something, and those sheriff's deputy cars gotta be moved from there, and then they gotta be shuffled off somewhere else.
Well, he did say they would park out back if they, if they needed to, but obviously they're just at the temporary for them as well, so.
Right.
And we do know unfortunately that that building is, um, gonna take some time to figure out what they're doing with that public over there. So we've got a little, I don't wanna say we've got a little bit of time, but we realistically do, so. But for what it matters, um, again, it's taxpayer dollars. So we are doing what we can to make sure that we're not expending anything that's unnecessary. So at least we're, you know, exploring options before we get to that point. But at the end of the day, it'll be your guys.
Twenty-eight spots is twenty-eight spots. That's, that's big, and that's worth.
But it's quite a price tag to, to consider for twenty-eight parking spots.
It is ninety thousand dollars over five years, uh, if you do the math. Um, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars, uh, a month.
Martha Yoder, Tremble County Auditor, which is almost what he paid for the entire.
It doesn't matter what he paid for it. The supply, demand, front and both streets, we should've bought it.
Well, if we wanna talk about supply and demand, um, he, uh, he offered it up to our employees for fifty dollars a month. And nobody took them up on it.
Understand that.
True.
So that route didn't work. So I, that's why I said the price. That's why I said a lesser price.
Yep.
And he could put a gate and, you know, charge whatever, three dollars an hour, whatever, whatever they're going, everything is. But I don't think that would be a successful venture either, 'cause I don't think we got the volume of people. Um, downtown Youngstown, yeah, that works. Downtown Warren, for that spot behind the building, I don't, I don't think that's a good business proposition. But, um, it's not my business. So we'll figure out if there's wiggle room at all. If there is, great. If there isn't, then we know what our answer is. Sounds good. And then, uh, we also discussed to be more accessible, and this isn't something to act on right away. But the potential of opening up the side door on Harmon again. And pre-COVID levels and having one deputy just outside the elevator at a desk. And I don't know if we have the need in this building anymore for metal detectors. Um, you know, there's a lot of county buildings, a lot of government entities that don't have that. And if we could be more accessible for the public to be able to come in and even employees off of Harmon, come in the front, come in the side. Um, I'd like to have a discussion about that sometime, about why it went to that.
What, what?
After twenty-twenty and why it ended with the feasibility of it as.
I, I could, I could tell you it wasn't anything to do with COVID. It was everything to do with safety and public safety. Our sheriff, um, who, you know, had recommended, look, um, we need a metal detector, we need, we need metal detectors. We need, um, one entrance, one exit for, for purposes of being able to. But people were coming in that side door and then going into the lobby and going into the stairwell, so we didn't know where they were. There's access to certain departments through that stairwell that I won't mention. Um, if you go through that, if, we would have to block something else off, put it that way.
Right.
If that were open, um. So I think it was from a, just a public safety and, um, unfortunately, the sign of the times that we live in. That, that, you know, for, for the, for the public welfare and for everybody's, uh, peace of mind. One entrance, one exit makes it a whole lot easier to police and monitor, uh, who comes in and out of the building. And then obviously the metal detectors, what they're bringing in and out of the building, you know? Uh, so that was something that was recommended by our sheriff, and that's why we acted on it. Had nothing to do with COVID.
Well, and now we're looking at, we're paying for two deputies at exorbitant rate. We've got the cost of the equipment, the metal detector, which he said he can unload tomorrow if we wanted to. And it's just kinda overkill. We can have basically a security guard doing what these deputies have to do downstairs for a fraction of the price.
We have, um, you know, um, collective bargaining agreements too that we, I, I don't know if that would be something that, you know, since we have them down there right now. Their union could, could look at that and say, no, you can't have security guards down there. I, I don't know. I don't know that.
Martha Yoder, Tremble County Auditor, the other thing that, um, we look at as far as having people here in the building. We do have issues sometimes with people who come in.
Yes.
And are not particularly friendly. We have.
True.
Um, people in this building who have to deal with the public every single day. And as we know, folks have gotten mean. And, um, you know, I've had people threatened. Um, I've had, uh, employee that I had to remove from the building. And we couldn't have done that if we didn't have deputies here.
Yes.
Um, one of the things that was a big surprise to me, uh, when I became auditor. You know, I've been an employer, I was an employer for twenty-nine years. And I should've, maybe should've known this, but I was such a small employer, it was a, a little different. Is how much time and effort and energy and, um, worry and prayer I've had to expend over the safety and well-being of my employees. And it's really important that we keep folks safe. Um, I have, uh, forty-three or forty-four people in this building. And their safety is always in my head. My two cents.
We still have a deputy here, and then a deputy is one doorway away from an ant farm full of deputies on the other side of the building. So I mean, it's, it's.
I understand.
You know, having one there, two there, three there in the hallway, two of them just seems like it's overkill.
We, we have.
The two to be sitting there.
Sorry, Martha Yoder, Tremble County Auditor. We have had an issue though of having to, when we've required a deputy that, um, when there's two, that they have to be two at a time. They won't come one at a time.
Yes.
So if you have one there, you're still gonna, and, and we have, somebody pushes that panic button. I want somebody there.
Not to mention, if someone, if someone does push a panic button, that deputy would have to go respond to that, which would leave the front door.
Correct.
Right, so, so there's, you know, law enforcement training that goes into that as well.
When we had to, when we had the situation where we had to remove someone, it, that was a situation, we had to remove someone and we had to wait for a bit. I don't want it. The less we have to wait, somebody comes in there.
Yeah.
My folks have to deal with, a lot of people are unhappy. Nobody likes.
As does the treasurer.
Yeah, absolutely. That, our floor, our floor.
Sure.
That second floor, yeah. And I just, you know, I would be very, very, very careful about changing anything that makes people less secure.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just think it's a sign of the times that, that, uh, you know, I think in, in, you go back years, and I think a lot of these buildings were wide open. And I'd love for them to be, but you hear about, you know, we had active shooter training in here before. God forbid something were to happen. Um, the, the safer and more secure we are, I think the better off we are. Um, not to say that, you know, I hate to, something like that would happen, God forbid, but, uh, did. You know, we, I think we can minimize the risk by, by using every safety precaution that we possibly can. And I think one entrance, one exit is one of those things. I think metal detectors is one of those things. I think two deputies down there is one of those things.
Uh, Martha Yoder, Tremble County Auditor, I'm just gonna also say, yes, you guys have people come here who are unhappy. But you guys have locked doors.
Yes.
Because you're not public facing. Treasurer's office, recorder's office, my office, clerk of court.
One of them.
We are, we are all public. And that includes those of us who are public officials who are in those offices. If somebody wants to get in and come back, they can get to those of us. And we know that those of us who are public officials are the bigger target. I just, I, I want my, I want my, my employee's safety is super important. My own safety is very important. And, and I, you know, we're in this building. I can't carry, I can't do that, I can't defend myself. I have to depend on somebody else to do it. And I think removing that for myself, for the recorder, for the treasurer, for the clerk of courts, for the employees in this building. We, we wanna be very careful and not take a step back.
Yes. I, I think that, um, I, I, I just agree wholeheartedly. I think that, um, it's one of those things where God forbid something did happen and we didn't put in place all the safety measures that we could. You know, shame on us. So, uh, I mean, look, you're never gonna stop everything. You're never gonna, you know, but, but you can be proactive. And I think that's what those things are. So, John?
John Gargano, JFS, excuse me, Commissioner. Number one is way back when we had private security at JFS. Uh, with no disrespect to that service, uh, they have no law enforcement powers.
Correct.
They can't arrest, they can't really stop anybody. And the issue is that, and then there's the liability issue with those security officers. And also, um, they're not trained in that area. And they really didn't do a whole lot for us. Uh, and unfortunately, um, you know, we have a, a lot of public access there and the individuals. But since we've had, you know, the sheriff's deputies there and the, and the, uh, X-ray machine. They have uncovered many, many different weapons in our building. It might be a little bit different than, you know, the building that you're in here and things like that. Uh, uh, I am a proponent of security, uh, because of the times, as Commissioner Cantal Mesa said. Uh, but also, uh, the extent of the people coming in at our agency. And the ability and the training that the deputies have as compared to a security company. And I, I just wanna put that out there. We didn't have, uh, much success with a, uh, security company because they don't have the authority, they don't have the powers, they, they can't arrest, they can't stop, they can't do a lot of these things that the, um, uh, law enforcement can do.
And, and I get what Commissioner Malloy's saying because of, you know, and we wanna be accessible.
Right, right.
But, but I think we can do both, you know what I mean? I think we can be accessible, but protect our employees and ourselves at the same time. And the, and the general public that's gonna be in this building at any given moment, you know, so.
I do think Alex even Genji Bush, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to kind of just clear out everything right now and not, you know, make a decision either way, because it's not my decision. But there are other ways too that we can be, um, more safe in this apartment, in this building. Specifically our stairwells, I mean, at JFS, I gave this example. We have the outward facing stairwell fobs that would eliminate any access of any non-employees coming in from either exit. It's really the right thing to do no matter what. Even with, I mean, they can just come in and get right on a stairwell and go anywhere in the building at any time. So what we did at JFS was we enabled fobs on the doors, and this was actually due to COVID because we had people coming in and going straight on the elevators, straight on the doors. I mean, it was bad. So, um, now they can still get out. There's no fire risk. Everybody says, Alex, you're not thinking. I am thinking. There is, you can go down the stairwell and you can get out the stairwell in case of an evacuation or emergency. You just can't get into them. Um, you know, then people gave me a little bit of pushback about that. Well, what if the public wants to take the stairwell? We could badge them in to take, they could still go up the stairs. The sheriff could still have a fob to badge them in to go up the stairs. We just wanna know where they're going. I mean, I think there's, I think now in twenty-twenty-four, there's, there's a lot of different ways that we can kind of protect ourselves, to your point. Um, we just, we really need to sit down. One thing that I was adamant about was, of course, the safety. We don't want to do anything, you know, laterally, single-handedly. We need to sit down with the prosecutor, with the, uh, auditor. Everybody who has a stake in this building, yes, you commissioners own this building, but we have elected officials who are in this building. And I'm sure that they're gonna feel a certain way about this too. So we really need to have a larger meeting. Here's, I guess you guys do me say this every week, let's have a kumbaya. Let's get all, let's get all the parties that we need to have at the table, including HR, including every elected official in this building, including data, or, excuse me, IP. Um, data is no longer the, you know, term. I apologize. Um, but we really need to kind of get everybody together and, uh, you know, rethink, maybe rethink, maybe not rethink, but there's smaller things that we can do. And then, you know, accessibility, I, I get it, that side entrance. I mean, even if maybe you wanna say letting employees in the side entrance, I'm not sure, or maybe you don't at all. I don't know, but we need to sit down and really think through it all.
And again, how do we police that?
Right.
And how does, how does a door that's open for an employee and then somebody?
Maybe it's a fob entry, is what I'm saying.
But, but what about, but what about if the door opens and then somebody's behind them?
I know. Right.
And you just hold the door.
That's true.
I, I know these are worst-case scenarios, but unfortunately, we have to think that one.
I mean, you could sit downstairs though and watch seventeen employees go right around the metal detector after they come out and run on a cigarette.
Well, that's why I think.
I mean, so it's, it's already porous like Swiss cheese as it is with employees. So it's in.
But with the intent for employees, it was an intent for the public.
It's more the public.
The intent is for the public.
The intent is for the public entering, yeah. I think the, the deputies know who's an employee and who's not as they come back in after lunch or whatever they're doing, you know? But members of the public, I see every member of the public.
Go through it, yeah, thank you.
And Martha Yoder, Tremble County Auditor, we would presume, presume, because we did have this issue, that our employees would be safe people. Um, when we found out that we had an employee who was not a safe person.
He was coming in.
He was removed thanks to the deputies, also thanks. He was removed thanks to the deputies, also thanks to the deputies, he was not allowed in, back in the building. Um, they watched out for us, but we walk, worked through that process and I was very grateful for that. Um.
To your point, also, we've had, uh, individuals coming up here screaming at our staff, you know, uh, wearing
True.
T-shirts or whatever they were wearing.
Yeah, with profanity on it.
With profanity on it and just, you know. It, it's, I, I don't think you're ever gonna stop that, but I think you just try to minimize it and I know that's making everybody go through more hoops, but I think, I, I think we need to take every precaution in, in today's age. I just, my opinion.
John Gargano, JFS, to a point that, uh, Martha was making. We have the security system there and the X-ray machine, but I also have in place that no matter what, each and every employee going out and coming in has to go through the security. I go through it every time, uh, you know, when I'm there, okay? So, they have to monitor because unfortunately, in this day and age, you don't know about employees. You don't know about, you know, their personal lives, what's affecting them and stuff like that. Um, you know, there's been employees that have come through and that they've gone out and then they've come back in with, you know, knives or whatever and stuff like that. So, um, I have a policy there that no matter who it is, have to go through it, employees or not. And if they, you know, or women, if they have their purses and they leave, they have to put their purses through the, uh, scanner. And Alex used to have to do that too, so.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing that out, um, just because there's conversation here. But you have to, you have to be concerned about the safety, uh, convenience for the, for the customer, but also the safety of the employees that, you know, are working.
And the safety of the customers.
And the customers.
Right. Yeah, the pub, Martha O'Trumpet County Auditor, public's here and we have an incident, they're not safe. And we do have public here. We have a lot of, I, I, I realize too, sometimes we kind of get in our, in our, um, selves a little bit, in our, you know, in our silos. But we have, as I said, we have publics on second floor, both treasurer and, uh, you know, it's constant traffic.
At every floor.
At every, well, and, and
Every floor, there's public intercellation.
There are third, well, the only one really that's not completely is
Would be the third, but
The, no, the third has GIS.
Oh, yeah.
Tech map GIS. Um, the fourth is not, is a little more limited.
They have, it is, but they have quite a bit of their families that come through.
Yeah, they gotta pick them, come over here and fill out.
So, we have, we have people in this building
There's quite a bit of access.
Who, who aren't, you know, all the time. And so, you know, if some, if a bad actor or one of our employees that acting poorly is here and there's an incident, it's not just us, it's not just us public officials, it's not just our employees, it's that, those public people too. And I just, I just can't see us going backwards. I just don't wanna go backwards. It's your building, ultimately your choice.
Well, I'm not, just for the record, I'm not advocating, I, I, there needs to be sure. That, I'm not, I'm not saying either way. I, what I'm saying is, is that I think we need to, if this is a conversation you wanna entertain, then we just need to make sure all of the people are at the table and that we weigh out all of the pros and cons collectively.
And it's good we have discussion on this.
Yeah, collectively, not, you know.
Wasn't that long ago, we found out they were taking little old ladies sewing needles and scissors and stuff that they were confiscating into a metal box or old farmer's little case knives they've got for thirty years. They were confiscating and putting in a box, never to be seen again. We worked with the sheriff.
Yeah.
Eliminated that.
Right.
You know, that they don't have to forfeit anymore, so it's good to have these discussions to make sure we are first and foremost being public friendly and trying to err on the side of being accessible and being open to the public. So, it's a good experience when they come in this building, not a bad one. So, that's why I bring up the discussion of what creates the best experience for someone to say, I gotta go buy my dog license, I'm gonna go down there. You know, is it restrictive for them and they're not gonna come by a license? Cause they gotta go through layers of security, be treated like a criminal, can't find a place to park and, you know, and wait in long lines. You know, that's not something anybody wants. We try to eliminate the long lines, we try to be accessible with the hours as best we can. Try to get them in and out of the building, get them a place to park now. That's all, the only reason I'm having this discussion is, let's review the stuff that we have and see if it's working, what's not working. If we can tune up anything to make it more publicly accessible, that's what my goal is.
And then John, to your point real quick, I just wanted to, you are correct and if I wish, if who I wish in this building was that easy, but because of the elected officials that are in this building,
Yeah.
They can determine whether their employees are or not expected. So, the commissioners could say, yes, it's our building. I think we've actually looked at this before.
Yes, we have.
So, during COVID, this part was during COVID. We looked at this before. Again, I was not the ECU director at that time, but I do remember, um, this, as I remember this conversation being had. Um, and unfortunately, because we have other elected officials, not, I mean, it's a great thing, right? But yes, as the owner of the building, but they can't dictate that every person go through because each employee were, were
Well, that's why I said, you're
Different elected officials.
Your building's different than ours.
Yeah.
I don't have elected officials, but I do make everybody go through and Alex
Because it works flawlessly there. I will say that, but
Alex can attest to that and I go through it. I'd go back right now, I'm going through this X-ray machine.
And it's a very good program that we have, I mean, that you have there, by all means. And again, it's just, we have a lot more nuances here than what we have over there, unfortunately. And you really only have one way in
Well, before we had two, but we could not control. We had the front, we had the front door open, but we could not control who's coming in there and, and what were they bringing? And it was also the same thing. Well, we'll keep it open for the, or fob the, uh, workers because they were parking across the street. Um, became that, you know, as they come in masses, you know, somebody from the public just gets right behind somebody and comes right in.
Yeah.
And that was, that, again, ours is a little different than yours, Commissioner.
But similar.
Similar, but I had a lot more people and, and people were trying to sneak in from the front. And I really, at one time I had three deputies, but I had one in the front, two in the back. But that one in the front couldn't remember who was the client, who wasn't the client. So, that became an issue, uh, for me, but the front door is, has a, um, crash bar. I mean, it could go out if there's an emergency or something like that. They just can't come in and for me is to control, uh, everybody, so they all have to come from the back door.
Um, I do think though, just to round this conversation out, Commissioners, um, we have some work to do internally first. And I mean actually work that we can do collectively as, I know you guys are both shaking your heads, I know where we're going, I'm gonna say it, we're talking about it. We need, we owe it to ourselves to do some work internally first. We do, uh, need to have a conversation and as part of my goal as HR and safety plans and all of that is, we need to have a safety plan. We need to have those things, you know. So, what I mean by that is, who actually has access to these buildings, right? Like, we need to have logs, I need to have access, we need to have that, um, we have maintenance, again, I hate to make this about, but we have maintenance people who can come underground, go above, go around. There's two, we need to, we need to do our due diligence here first, okay? So, I would like to talk about that, you know, security cameras.
I think the fobs are gonna take care of a lot of that, aren't they? Cause anytime someone fobs any doors, they have
Only on, only on the front door, Commissioner, so.
So, we're not gonna put fobs on the maintenance door, the doors to get through, the sheriff's department, come from the basement, or maintenance has to go through, why don't we put fobs there too?
I mean, if we're talking about external, we gotta talk about internal.
Yeah, you're right.
You know what I mean? Like, maybe we need to start with our own, um, first and, and that's something that I, the more conversations I have, the more I'm realizing, eh, I don't like that. I don't like that. If I don't like it, I think maybe we don't even know, you know, what, I hate to say that, but we really need to sit down and look at who has access key wise, who doesn't? Who should? Who that determining entity is? And really, it's you guys and/or myself. You, you know, you can help, I can help you with that from a safety perspective. But we should know at all times who has, you know, and again, security footage is another thing. Who has access to what security cameras and why? Does somebody even need this or do they need this and they don't have it? You know, what, we have some work to do around that and I have been working a little bit with IT to kick this off as, you know, I get more into my role here. Not that I have a day to breathe above air, but that's okay, but these are things that we need to really be, we really need to target first. Disaster plans, evacuation plans, safety plans, any, any of those have to be set. And then we can bring everybody else, you know, but we really do need to kind of tighten the belts a little bit, so.
Tim?
Yeah, the, Tim, Tim Hanford, Deputy Auditor. One of the things that we had looked at was just fobbing that front door. Um, the big concern was that we have only physical keys, but if people turn them back in after their employment is over, we don't know.
And excuse me, I gotta butt in here.
Yeah.
They can make copies of this.
They, and they can make
So, when we're talking about keys here, yes, we could have a log all day of Alex has a key. But who knows that Alex didn't go home and make twelve copies of that physical key?
But, but it is, it behooves me that, I can go hit the code on the maintenance and come through there any day, so.
Well, that's another, well, that's another, that's another part of what I'm talking, yeah.
Situation, that's probably gonna be step two, is we're gonna have
Right, so it's phases, it's kind of, you know, of knowing, yeah.
I mean, my, my big concern today, we, we already ran into an issue because we added some of the readers on some of the doors and people got very concerned. And trying to tell them, look, this is all about security. We're adding a, a fob reader on that front door. People that have, that have been used to just using their physical key, the longer they're gonna use that physical key and they're gonna have to swipe the, their, their fob to get in. It's gonna be something different, so it's gonna be a little
Tim, can you explain just a little bit more about that? So, the, the, the key will only get you into that front first door.
The very front door.
They'll be stuck within that corridor if they don't have fob access to the second door, is what, is what Tim is saying.
Correct, yes.
So.
And, and that was put in place as an additional layer of security, but also too, if we suffer some, some type of system outage, power outage, or we're having issues with, with our, our, our electronic equipment, that still prevents after-hours access to the building. So, it, the, the general public, that door's not gonna be left wide open. But it came down to, so we have that extra layer, we have the, the disaster, uh, plan put in place where the building was filthy. This is all gonna be a process, you know, I lose. Back there listening to all of this, like, well, we don't really wanna take a step back. Want to maintain our security and keep on with it and make sure, you know, constantly auditing ourselves, constantly looking at, are there, is there something we've over, constantly being, being able to understand and keep a secure environment? Not only for all of our employees, but, but also for, for, for the general public that comes in here all the time. Want to make sure that everybody
So, the possibility of fobbing all those doors you're gonna get through in maintenance, fobbing the a, a, entrance to the sheriff's department with a reader to know who's going where and when, that's, we're not there yet?
Not, not there yet. We definitely can be there. Now, it's, it's, it's all gonna be looking at the most cost, the most cost-effective way of doing it. We don't wanna just throw money at, at, at something right now. We wanna make sure we do it.
And I, I just wanna, I, piggyback on that, Alex DeMonge, John DeMonge, sharing resources, alright, communication is key. Communication is key. We tend to work in silos sometimes, but we're doing better, working together. But we need to also realize that anything we do touches all these other departments too. So, please, I, I just, you know, if anything, as much as we probably don't wanna talk about these things, it's very important to communicate so we understand the ramifications or if we're missing something or if we didn't think about something. You know, obviously, we all have different types of jobs and needs to be in these buildings. So, we have to understand the full ramifications of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And then make sure that we're communicating it effectively to our people because they do get sort of, right? I mean, you would too, right? What's going on? Why is this changing? You know, nobody said anything. We do have union members in here, we have elected officials in here, we have a lot of work. And then what happens is it rolls downhill and Alex gets the shit out of work, right? So, we need to really not do that because I, I just don't, yes, we have to be proactive, work together and communicate it as we are, whatever we decide.
Great. Also, do they have something, or before?
Anybody else? Yes. Trying to make it brief. Um, eligible, ineligible and updates, the list is still there of who's pending with Attorney Rogers. Um, Gus Davis and Hubbard Townships are working on requests with Julie Green. The revised LMI map potentially makes those generator requests that were ineligible eligible, so she's working on that. Kinsman reached out and asked about substituting a different request for a culvert for a portion of their frozen, frozen money. If you'll recall, they had, uh, submitted a request for landscaping for the green space. Meanwhile, after they reached out, or during the exact time they reached out, Julie Green asked about them also resubmitting their generator request. They asked to do both, the culvert and, but only one generator. The original request was for two. The two requests, the generator and the culvert, um, put them at thirty-six thousand one hundred dollars, which is thirteen fifty oh nine over their frozen money. Um, you've already increased the frozen money once for them for just under two fifty. Do you wanna increase the frozen money another time or shall I ask them to find money in their budget to make up the difference?
Thirteen hundred bucks, I, I would say increase.
That's fine, that's fine.
Alright. Um, and this is what pertains to Tacy. Um, when I began organizing the requests and allocations last year, on the spreadsheet I inherited were three county requests for nine-one-one that apparently the commissioners at that time wished to go forward to, that's, I'm basing that on the, the spreadsheet. Um, but they had not all been deemed eligible. And I think that this was because of the fact that the county was hiring someone who ended up being Tacy to be the director and wanted to be sure that that was still what you wanted. Um, I met with both Director Tacy McDonnell and Assistant Director Patty Goldner on these requests and they do wish to go forward. The requests which have been listed on the allocated promise sheets are as follows. Mobile command post phones to be used at both backup nine-one-one and in the mobile command post vehicle for a hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. This was a revision of a request that had already been ruled eligible. Uh, mobile radios to be used both at the backup site and the mobile command post vehicle, three hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. Two desktop radios for nine-one-one, which would add two more positions, two hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars. Please note the last two requests on the allocated spreadsheets that I've been giving you were actually combined. I will separate these out so that it's clear. We had, we had a similar issue with the stuff that was being done at, um, the fairground where we didn't have it itemized. I'll spread it out. Um, although these requests are pretty assuredly eligible, we should get this formally accomplished as soon as possible in order to begin moving forward. I wanna reiterate that the money, that this is money that we already set aside. This is not anything new. This is money that you guys had set aside prior to my organizing. So, do I have the board's permission to have Attorney Rogers issue an opinion on all three of these requests?
Yeah, I, I'd kinda like to wait and put it all as far as the whole big master plan with that, I don't know, like, we don't know as we move. The mobile command post phones, we don't have the mobile command unit yet. We don't, John doesn't even have that, any kind of request, what he needs.
That's coming very close, yeah, and that's
I know that.
But, um, would you like to weigh in, Tacy, on why, why you feel like it's important? Cause we, we talked about moving forward on these last week. Um, if you don't, I, I, you know, we're kind of, we can't move forward till we get them eligible. You've worked, been working with the vendors on this.
Yeah, and I, I came into kind of this, Tacy McDonnell, nine-one-one director, I came into this kind of late, um, so I was on the tail end of it. Um, but what was advised to me is that they were getting the mobile command unit and these would basically be, uh, backups, hot backups as we were supposed to have a backup site traditionally at Warren PD, which that is not in effect happening. Um, I mean, ideally, yeah, it would be great to roll them all in with the project, but realistically speaking, we don't know what kind of timeline we're looking at to move. I mean, I know you wanna move as soon as possible, we all wanna move as soon as possible, but realistically, I don't know how long that's gonna take. Um, and we don't have any backups and if there's, God forbid, some issue with the power at our building or sewer at our building or hospital issue at our building, um, we don't have a hot backup site to go to and we would be kind of dead in the water, so.
And, and, and speaking
There's no backup at Warren City? I mean, I got a call from Warren Police Chief that said, hey, even Eddie said if you need to use our system when he was worried about that with, when the power's out one day.
No. They are, they have one of the best nine-one-one sites for maintenance positions, for like maintenance and stuff and, and networking is done for there, but there are no physical dispatch capabilities.
Right, and, and this is just getting the eligibility, this is, which we have for almost, with all of these requests. Um, but that are on that sheet, Martha O'Trumpet County Auditor, that are on that a, a, allocated sheet. We put off the eligibility because we were waiting on her. I didn't realize that. I came into this late too. Um, the other thing about the mobile command unit, it's, my understanding, it's the intention to move forward with that. We have a million dollars set aside for it. He is working on quotes right now so that we will start moving forward. He is working on quotes right now so that we will start moving forward. That's eligible. We know it's eligible. We, and it's the intent, if we can't get to that before the end of the year to do an MOU, I spoke about that last week. So, it's my understanding that he's moving, he and I had spoken, I sat down with him about the same time I sat down with you, uh, because we're concerned about the deadlines, right? Um, I think it was May, I think it was when we sat down. So, it's my understanding, he has every intention of moving forward because that's what he's been led to believe, that, and that money's been set aside on the allocated sheet. Um, I, you know, if you guys don't want me to do this, that's fine, but.
It's for the eligibility, not for the appropriation.
Right, it's for the eligibility. Eventually, I mean, you guys still have to do a final resolution, and that's, you know, up to you guys. But we, before we can do anything, we really need to have that eligibility. It was never, it was just something that was never done.
Can I ask a terrifying question? Because Alex, Stephen Johnson, she goes, she's, right? Last week, we realized, obviously, this is very important, the mobile command unit. Um, and I did speak with Mr. Hickey, um, after we met in nine-one-one. We need to have that mobile command unit up and running ASAP, no matter what.
Right, I agree.
To this whole conversation, e- even if we weren't tied to Hillside Utilities, even if it were just the perfect, that building is, as we know, you know, anything can happen at any time in that building. It's not necessarily the best, you know. But anyways, so we can have six nine-one-one tele, or nine-one-one dispatching units within that mobile command. Even for the move, it's gonna be who of us to have that mobile unit up so they can be still dispatching while we're moving, or whatever the case may happen, we need to get that moving. But my question for you is, just so that maybe we understand, that money, the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars put in, is that for technology to go into the mobile command unit?
It is.
Is that what I'm?
Uh, the one thirty, one thirty-two, two fifty-five is mobile command post phones to be used both at backup nine-one-one.
So, why would we get the unit, why would we approve the unit, I guess is what I'm saying, if we're not gonna, that's the technology.
Right, this is, this is the technology.
That's just what I'm asking.
We are, but, but like, this is an iPhone fourteen. There's iPhone fifteens are out already. By the time we get this thing, and I know, I know technology with the radios changes too. They get upgrades to different models. Why would we buy two years ago's phone when the new one makes it out?
Because we have to move forward, we have to move forward all of this as soon as possible. And we also need to find the eligibility. We have, first of all, before we can even move forward, we have to have the eligibility. We have that on the mobile command unit, it got, it did not get done on this. I'm asking permission, what I'm asking for right now is permission to do that. You guys can fight this other fight as to when, but honestly, it's gotta come together. Um, I.
That's my question to you, Martha, is, like, that, that's my question to everybody here. So, we understand, does this not all need to somewhat work together in order to make this valid, is what I'm saying?
Absolutely, that's, absolutely.
Well, and the part for our technology, for the nine-one-one side of things is, even if, let's say, the mobile fan vehicle doesn't even go, those can be taken to Warren PD or two sites to be used.
Right, and that was, I believe, the Martha Yoder, Trump County Auditor.
That's why Patty had, that was the mobile.
I believe that that was, that was, because there was a lot, part of why I think this didn't get sent to Tanya, or actually, I spoke with Tanya, or I've, I've actually emailed with Tanya about it to see if she had something that I didn't have, right? Is she was told to, um, hold because you were moving it, or you were coming in. And so, it was going to be decided, you know, making sure that what Patty felt was necessary, that you would also agree with. Um, and then it sort of got, it was the, the me taking over the organization of this, all, you know, all of it sort of got put aside, and it never got done. Everything else that's on that allocated and promise sheet has already been ruled eligible. That's why it's there. This was put there because it was the, I believe, because it was the attention, intention of the commissioners at that time to do this. Um, the problem with waiting on eligibility is if you guys do decide to do that, that's one more step we have to go through in order to meet that obligation requirement at the end of the year. And it just, it seems, you know, and we may have to do an MOU and all of that, that creates more work. This is something she already has on her desk, she can look at. It's probably, honestly, I don't wanna, I hate to say this, it's probably a slam dunk that it's eligible, but we need that. We need that, be able to do it to do the next step. Um, I understand the concerns about technology, but we're, the, the mobile command unit is in process. They, he is working on it. The only reason that, um, and, and I, I wish Mr. Hickey were here. The only reason that, is my understanding, has just been about, has been about the, the, the issues that have risen up that EMA has had to deal with one after the other. They had, you know, they were taken over for a little bit for certain things that happened. We've got, we're trying to also deal with the coroner, all of these things. So, it's not like, oh, we're not gonna do it. I know when I spoke to him in May, he was hoping to actually have this stuff to go forward during the summer. It just got delayed. And it's, he understands that it, it's certainly a front and center thing that has to happen.
I know the last conversation I was with about a month ago was, he's working on finding the vehicle. When they do, it's gonna take him a year to build it. So, when we're, we're gonna have all this equipment, they're gonna sit on for a year.
So, again, eligibility is different than approval, Martha Yoder, Trump County Auditor. Second, if we, if, if we're gonna use ARPA funds for this, we gotta, we gotta obligate it. One way or the other. Whether we move forward to get quotes and do all the stuff and everything and do a resolution, or we do an MOU, we have to obligate this money by the end of the year.
Or we'd be using.
And, and quite frankly, rolling it into the project that we're not even sure we can already afford without ARPA funds, which, and, and adding more money to a project without having those ARPA funds to use that is not wise.
I agree. Get the opinion, that's all. We're paying our big money to make opinions, but if you wanna do it, I'll go ahead and get the opinion.
Well, we're not, we're, we've made a little dent in the money that we're asking, that we're doing for her. We, we have two hundred and fifty thousand that we have allocated. And I, I can't tell you, I don't have it in front of me, but we're not even halfway there on what we pay. Right.
But we also have seven hundred thousand dollars left in ARPA, and we got a three million dollar commitment we made to save a hospital and eight hundred jobs.
Well, and that's, again, that's.
We gotta figure out which are priority at this moment.
Martha Yoder, Trump County Auditor. Ultimately, these are decisions left up to you, but you may, you may find yourself short of funds to build the nine-one-one center that you wanna build.
All tough decisions.
Yeah.
So, I, I, we get the opinion, that way it's ready to go if and when we wanna move on it, right?
Commissioner?
We're not obligating the funds. Right?
Is that, is that a yes?
Yeah, it's a yes.
All right, all right. All right. County Engineers Office is working with the following townships to do agreements with their frozen fund in the same, fund in the same way that Vernon did. Visetta, a hundred thousand, Farmington, a hundred thousand, and Mes- Mesopotamia, a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, you were given the yes sheet, here's the bottom line spreadsheet. And that's all.
Jerry?
Yeah, Commissioner, there's something else. When we started digging out there, I think you like filled it yourself. This is the muck that we are encountering down there, right around the depth of our, we're gonna be in. This is, uh, whatever, put in a manhole installation. Now, the, we cannot set pipe on something that's unstable. So, this is where we're gonna have to dig underneath, add extra premium fill underneath the pipe, go down till we get to firm soils. So, I would just bring this to your attention, your attention as a heads up. And this is not something that you can approve before they do the work. I mean, he's, he's out there in the muck digging this. And so, if it does come up, oh, I need a change order for an extra fifteen thousand dollars worth of foundation cushion. Why didn't you get approval ahead of time? This is just an example of things that you cannot approve ahead of.
There are some things that you have to do that way. Else they jeopardize the movement in the project.
Yeah, we can, oh, can't tell Corrella stop work.
And the prosecutor.
We, we gotta wait to get this submitted on a Thursday, have a meeting the next week, uh, get prosecutor's honor to sign off on, then get, uh, then act, actually execute the change order and then tell them to go ahead. It's not something you can sit there and wait, you know, two or three weeks. So, I'll just bring this to your attention that this is something that we need to address. And we, I don't, we don't know how prevalent that is yet. Uh, but we did find this on Rockaway Avenue where one of the manholes are going in. And we're hoping this is gonna be prevalent throughout the project. I just saw.
So, this could be a longer stretch than what you realize.
Oh, yeah, we, we don't, we, we had soil boarding done out there, and nothing indicated this slush layer down in there. And it's happened to be right around the depth of where we have to put everything in. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything remaining? Mr. Valeski, you have anything, you're just observing, you're listening? We kinda went over some of this stuff earlier. You have anything before we adjourn?
Well, I have anything.
Yes, sir.
I wanna know where you're at.
We, um, we just talked about before you got here, um, to move forward with having the prosecutor, uh, generate what he wants out of a lease, legally what he would want, and then to take the next step to negotiate with you on price. We came in consensus, we thought the fifty was a little bit high. We wanted to see if there was, uh, an, a, any wiggle room in that with you.
Take it off the table.
Okay.
You're in violation of Ohio Advice Code now because you're actually in excess of sixty to ninety days of responding to me. And I'm tired of waiting. I've lost probably fifteen thousand dollars in, in revenue for the property waiting for you. And I mean that, I mean the entire, everybody. You know, and all I hear is excuses after excuses after excuses. I'm done with it. I can't even get out of my parking lot right now because there's people parked in front of my driveway. I'm tired. And all I hear is, we're getting to it, we're getting to it. Well, you're not getting to it.
We just discussed this for about fifteen minutes before we got here.
I'm a little D.O.'ed right now. All you have to do, very simple, the Ohio Advice Code lays it out, what the process should be, just go to that. Reset. So, this, we're just gonna take it off the table. You're in violation anyway, so. I don't know what you're doing, I don't know if you're talking to somebody else. You know, if you are, then that's an ethics violation.
Haven't spoken to anybody, talked to anybody else about any part, and you only, the only proposal we got.
I don't know that, but if you are, that's where we're gonna, we're gonna issue that. But you've had a, you have an obligation to respond to my wife and myself within a certain amount of time according to Ohio Advice Code. Fail to do that. Either you wanna do business, do business, if you don't, just tell me, Jim, we don't wanna do business.
I just told you exactly what we decided on here was, have the prosecutor drop the lease, because it's gonna be our lease, not yours, and then negotiate the price. The price that you submitted is a price that we're not agreeable to. We'd like to see if there's, the fifty dollars a spot, we, we've had a consensus here that we thought that was a little high. We wanted to see if there was a, a lesser amount that you would consider. And if there's not, then, knock the table then.
Absolutely not, absolutely not, absolutely not. And if you've done your research, you know that the price that we gave you is an extremely fair price. It's less than market value. So, you, look at the parking lots around town, see what they charge.
You put it up to county employees already, and one person paid you fifty dollars a month for it. So, how is that fair market price when you have one taker on twenty-eight spots that you opened up before you even negotiated with us, you had one taker?
Why? Because they're trespassing on somebody else's property now. They're not, they don't wanna pay pony up because, first of all, the weather's been pretty nice, and they just walk. And they're using somebody else's parking lot, they're trespassing on their parking lot, and they haven't said anything yet. But if they say something and force the employees out of their parking lot, you're gonna have a real problem. You're gonna have about a hundred employees that got no place to park. You look puzzled, Marla.
No, I just, uh, whi- which spots are we talking about?
The church parking lot.
Hmm.
Okay. They enforced their parking, didn't. Pushed the door.
No, you're, and, and that's, you know, something that.
Yeah, what I speak is, what I speak is the truth. This all started out because I wanted to be a good neighbor. I got this problem. And you know what? I'm gonna go home and my wife's gonna tell me, I told you so. So, suck it up and listen to, I told you so. Had an opportunity, multiple opportunities, and you failed to react to them. And I, I'm not trying to be nasty here, I'm just stating the facts.
I wouldn't say we failed to react. We, we've done our due diligence, what we needed to do insurance-wise, we got over that hurdle. And then we got to a point where that hurdle's done, what do we do now? Drop the lease and negotiate to see if there's a wiggle room in the price or not.
You've been taking so long to do this.
So that we can vote on something. It has been. We've been trying to save a hospital and do many other things. Your parking lot isn't the first concern of the taxpayers' dollars. It's a concern, but it's not the top concern of, of necessity in the county.
Yeah, I'm sorry what's going on with the hospital, that's fine, but that's not my problem. You just, just don't deal with the hospital and just say it, screw Mr. Valeski, no.
I don't, I don't think that was ever said, that, that was never said in, in.
It's a shame that you treated your neighbor this way. If that's, if this is moral behavior? I'm, I'm done. Off the table.
Okay.
Off the table. Shame, it was a good spot, and it could've been a fairer price, I believe, that would've worked better for us using the taxpayer's dollars. But we couldn't just responsibly, as stewards of the taxpayer's money.
We have to do our due diligence.
Just accept his, his price, and that's it, is, we can't be bent over a barrel like that or strong-armed that way.
No.
And there was zero wiggle room there, and resistance when it came to insurance, right away, which threw up some red flags. Get over that hurdle, but then the price is the price. Um, you put a gate up there and have someone sit there and charge them whatever a day, and A, it's still providing thing, or you can put a guard in there, whatever.
And maybe in the future, it changes his mind, you know, who knows? We'll, we'll see.
We were discussing, I think he's gonna realize.
We were willing to negotiate in good faith.
That's right. We were, we were drawing a lease up for him to look at.
Right.
And then negotiating the price. And then we would've voted on yea or nay on the price that we had the final product. If it was fifty, we'd have voted on it. If it was forty, we'd have voted on it, or forty-five, we never got to that point.
No.
By him, we're drawing it now, so that's.
It is what it is. Move on.
And because people are parking in another place, it's gonna create a higher demand on price. Not at that point yet.
No.
If it was at that point, we'd be talking a different thing, but that's a hypothetical. Right. Does anybody have anything else really good?
Make a phone call, make a motion to adjourn, you need something? Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Councilor Mesa?
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.